Good morning, everyone. We're going to call our meeting for order. If you could please stand, we pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Members, if you could please make sure your mics are on. Mine was not. All right, roll call, please, Beth.
Sure. Commissioner Schlangen?
Here.
Commissioner Heinem?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Kapinski?
Here.
Commissioner Pop?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, move on to approval or amendments to the agenda. Monty, you have any?
No change. Actually, Mr. Chair, I'd like to pull a consent item, but we can do that when we get there.
Okay. Members, anything?
For approval, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve our agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, carried. County Board meetings are broadcasted live and video recorded on YouTube. Please refrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's Rules of Order for its meetings, so please obtain the board chair's consent before addressing the county board. Public comments are generally reserved for the open forum segment of the public hearings. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Thank you. Open forum. Is there anyone back there signed up? Okay, none. Thank you. Move on to our consent agenda. Items one through five.
So, Ms. Chair, could you please pull for me number three for some explanation?
Okay. We'll pull three for some other discussion. Commissioner Schlangen, you have?
Number two.
Number two? Okay. All right.
I'll move approval of consent agendas, item one, four, and five.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve consent to items one, four, and five. Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, that's carried. Commissioner Schlangen, item two.
Just to change the date of the meeting, it was on Tuesday.
Okay.
Were you at? It was Tuesday.
That was a Tuesday?
Yep.
Right at the top? Okay.
Tuesday, January 24th?
Yep.
Okay. That all?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to make a motion to correct that, please?
I make a motion to correct the minutes for Tuesday, the 24th.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Posed, that's carried. Item three, Monty.
Chair. So, Ms. Chair, I wanted to elaborate on the memorandum of agreement that you have with this labor contract. It does reflect, as you saw in the summary, a 3% general wage adjustment for '23 and then also the different arrangement on health insurance whereby the county would pay 80% of the single premium and 75% of the family. So, those are two big issues in the CBA. The memorandum of agreement addresses the recently approved Juneteenth holiday. As I understand, this legislation passed last week and was signed by the governor on Friday. Our labor attorney, Susan Hanson, tells us that the legislation will not be effective until August 1st of '23, which means obviously then the first time the holiday will be observed will be in '24. So, I just wanted, I wanted to point that out, make that clear. The MOA does contemplate that because you'll note in section one, it says, "Agreement shall be modified effective upon the effective date of the legislation," which is August 1st of '23. So, that covers that matter. So, I just want to make that clear is that is that we would not observe the Juneteenth holiday this year. It would not occur then until '24. And just another little side note is this is added as a so-called official state holiday, and under that statute, it says that no public business can be conducted on official state holidays, which means then we would be closed on that June 19th of '24.
All right, Monty then, and under the article in that contract, then that would be added as a holiday celebrated then, I'm assuming?
If you, sorry again?
Would that be added as a holiday that's celebrated then in the contract because it's not listed there now?
Right. There's a list of, I think, 11 holidays, and this would go as number 12.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. Any questions on that?
Motion to approve with the noted changes.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the noted changes on item three. Any other discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Auditor Treasurer, consider the establishment of Benton County absentee and UOCAVA for 2023. Heather?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So, we're here today asking to approve the absentee ballot board. For 2023, we are only expecting to act as the absentee ballot board should a township receive a ballot from a uniform or overseas voter. So, this would be anyone that's in the military or persons that are living temporarily outside of the United States.
Okay.
So, we're just requesting that you approve that we have a resolution to establish that ballot board in case it is needed for 2023. We're not expecting to have any other absentee voting that we would need to do a ballot board for in 2023.
All right. Any questions for Heather?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Heather, but the townships can actually go to their clerk and absentee ballot, right?
That's correct. This ballot board would only be for a military person or someone living outside of the U.S. that wishes to vote for their township election.
Okay.
Commissioner Schlangen?
And if there was an election that came up that covered the district or whatever, you would, it wouldn't apply with that?
We're not anticipating in 2023 that we would have any special elections. If there is a special election that would come up, we would seek a different resolution to establish a ballot board for that. But Benton County does generally have even-year elections.
Okay. Then I'm fine with it.
All right.
Make a motion to approve a resolution establishing the Benton County absentee and UOCAVA ballot board for 2023.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second on that. Is there any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, it's carried. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather.
Monty, project update from NextEra. Are we going to go right to you guys?
I'll turn it over to them, and the presentation is up on your screen.
I think they're warm now. I think you're warm now, right?
Yeah. Thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for having us today. Again, my name is Brittany Paxson, project manager on the Benton County Solar Project. This is Donell Herzig with me today.
Good morning.
She is the director of all renewable projects ranging from wind, solar, battery in the states of Minnesota, South Dakota, and North Dakota. Today, we're here to give you a quick project update on where we are at. Wanted to continue to keep the transparency and communication open with you all as we progress with this project. I won't take too much time on the next slide. I feel like we had this one back in November and again at the landowner dinner, but we do work for NextEra Energy, world's number-one generator from energy, the solar and wind. This map just showcases all the different assets we have in about 38 different states, including Canada, ranging from wind, solar, battery. Battery is actually up and coming now recently. Investing in Minnesota. So, this slide actually was shown back a couple of months ago when I first presented, but the numbers have actually been updated. So, we have been investing in Minnesota since the year 2000, $2.7 million annually in land payments to our landowners, about $50 million in annual payroll for those that we hire to manage our sites as well as those employees that work in the state. About $700 million total capital investment has been deployed into the state and about $567,000 in property taxes back into our communities in just the year 2021. So, Benton Solar, we are still looking at up to 100 megawatts of clean renewable energy that will be back into the community. Still located in Mindon and St. George townships, we're actually meeting with the Mindon Township Board next week at their meeting. St. George is working on getting on the schedule. We're still working to interconnect into Great River Energy's Benton County 115 KB substation and working and engaging with them here from Great River Energy on the most efficient transmission route for this project. With this project, we'll have new roads, underground electrical cables, operations and maintenance facility as well as a substation. And one of the biggest updates from November is that our commercial operations is now shifted into 2026 based on some customer demand. So, it was December 2025. Now, we're looking, you know, a couple of months into 2026. This is currently the larger boundary that we have, and this hasn't changed since last time. However, we are focused mainly on the western portion of that at this time. So, the western half is 100 megawatts, and then the other half, which I mentioned back in November when we were here, we did submit additional Q position for an additional 100 megawatts. So, that will come. But this is our first main priority of right now, but the second half is shortly coming thereafter. Benton County Community Benefits. So, one thing I mentioned last time was how eager we are in getting involved with the community. These projects last a very long time, and we want to make a big impact to where those areas are that we serve. So, about 100, $500,000 to $1 million in annual property taxes will go back into the county. The creation of up to 200 jobs during the peak of construction, about two to three full-time jobs. That will be those individuals that are operating the site once it becomes operational. And about two, up to 2 million in annual land payments to those landowners, and then, of course, increased activity for businesses during construction operations. The project timeline shifted a little bit based on the customer demand of the 2026 change here. So, right now, we're looking at the design suitability and diligence for the project as well as permitting. So, one of the big updates I wanted to give today is that we are working diligently to get our draft permit into the state of Minnesota in the next couple of months with the final going in summertime about July. So, that final application in the state of Minnesota will be on the public record. The draft is something that we do early to kind of iron out some questions that the PUC may have. But all of that is progressing well and should be in this year. Then we'll start construction in 2025 where it will become operational in 2026. Somewhere between, I would say, February and May would become operational. We have been out in the field. Surveys and studies have been completed. We've done a lot of environmental work, a lot of engineering and construction work to make sure that the site is feasible, making sure that we're, you know, placing the panels and the collection lines in the most viable areas. So, really making sure that we're taking into account the habitats of the environmental species in the area, vegetation, wetland, cultural. As you all know, I'm sure the requirements to get these projects built are very lengthy. So, we do make sure that we deploy a lot of effort into making sure that we're viable in the right places. Community support efforts. Again, sponsorships and donations within the county is something that we really pride ourselves on. So, we've done some outreach. We've met with some different local stakeholders and working with extensive plans to, you know, do things with local schools. In some areas, we've actually been able to, you know, teach different schools about, you know, what we do, solar, wind, and then do an activity with them to kind of, you know, show who we are. Shop with a Cop is something that we're having on our books. Join the Chambers of Commerce. We have a lot of meetings today, actually, with some members from the City Saint Cloud Chamber, meeting with Amanda today on the economic development. So, we're looking to join that as well today. And then, again, YMCA, Boys and Girls Club, local food pantries, and then, of course, continuing to keep our meetings that we do have with landowners at local restaurants like the Kairi Moon Grill. So, looking at another one of those in about April. Last time I was here, we did not have our Facebook or website launch, but now we do. So, we do have a website for the project as well as a Facebook page where we frequently post updates as well as an email address if there's any questions. And then, of course, my contact information is here if there's any questions or anything that comes up along the way. So, with that, I will pause because that was a lot, but if there's any questions, we'll take them. If not, thank you again.
Members, any questions?
I guess I, one, I have, you've dealt with the Public Utilities Commission before, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Have they speeded up the process compared to what they used to be?
So, Donell and I actually met with the Department of Commerce a couple of months ago to kind of explain, you know, it's about a 16th to 18th month-long permitting process. By the time we submit an application to when we actually get a notice to proceed. So, it's a long time. There are some opportunities to potentially speed it up in terms of like an amendment or an addendum, but that's not usually their, you know, main way of going about it. I think that they are aware of the lengthy process, but I don't know if anything's been implemented specifically. But we've tried to make some outreach and contacts there to help, you know, push this one along once it gets in, just to see if we can, you know, speed it up because it is long. Yeah. And another thing with Minnesota, too, is the winter, right? So, another reason why the shift of the COD happened is if we start, if we get the go-ahead to start construction in November, well, there's only so much you can do. And with solar projects, it takes about 12 months, like a solid 12 months just because there's a lot of different wirings and pulls individually compared to wind farms. So, it just take, it takes longer. So, I think that's also a piece of it, but I don't think there's been anything specifically implemented to speed it up right now.
Okay. Commissioner Schlangen?
With the... How much of the energy that's being produced is going to be used in Benton County? Or is it going to be all out of state?
Nope. It'll be in this area. So, our job here is we build the projects. We sell the power to an off-taker. That off-taker works with the local utilities in the community where you get your bills from, and they disperse it in that area. So, we create the power and then sell it to a customer. The customer works with the local utilities to bring power to the county. So, the challenge, too, is if it did go anywhere outside of the county is what we call line losses. So, the farther away that you take the electricity from where it's generated, it's, you lose it as it continues to go farther. So, the goal here would to keep it as close to where it's being generated as possible.
So, would it be fair to say in this case would be XL and East Central Electric then that would be utilizing that?
We don't have a customer at this point, but the local utility, yes, would probably, whoever the main local utility is would buy it from whoever buys the project.
Yeah, great. Okay. Commissioner Pop?
Is there, is there any laws or rules that say your utility companies have to buy the power when you generate it?
I mean...
I don't know if there's laws, but that's just technically the process, right?
They need it.
Right, right. We wouldn't, no one would buy the project if they didn't need the power to be dispersed. You know what I mean?
Okay.
So, it's with the, when an off-taker purchases a project, they have full intention of deploying it in that area. They wouldn't buy the project and not use it.
Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm.
So, at what point in time do the other utilities come in and buy it from you?
Right. So, that's actually a good question because we actually have to be competitive, too, right? Like, there's a lot of different projects that go on, and so our prices for our projects have to be able to be competitive in the market. So, there is a chance that off-takers may not buy this project but might buy another one, and that power, you know, gets dispersed in whatever area that is. But it is a good point because we do have to do everything we can to be competitive because we want to sell the project, too, right? So, it's definitely not a given, if that makes sense. We do lots of extensive repricings in our internal teams to see, you know, what makes this project most efficient, who's going to need it. You know, a lot of different companies have big goals to become renewable and things like that. So, the need is there, the demand's there. It's just a matter of where it fits within the pricing as well.
Has there been any study about how to, what happens when they run out of? Or has there been any problems producing the energy through the solar panels? Or, and how are they disposed of? Or how long has that been studied?
Yeah. So, the projects actually are around for about 25 to 30 years or so. And what happens with, there's, that's a twofold. So, one, what usually happens is what's called a repower. So, what we can do, and when that timeframe is up, is, you know, technology changes a lot, right? And so, in 30 years, who's to say what amazing things are going to be done, right? So, if the need is there for the project, what we would do is what's called a repower, and we would come in and update the main components of the solar project to make it more efficient. And then, the project can continue on for another 15 or so years. If the need wasn't there, there would be something called decommissioning, which actually is required by the state of Minnesota that we submit a decommissioning analysis, which means if the need for the project is no longer after the term 25 to 30 years, we as NextEra have to pay for the decommissioning of the project on our own behalf to get rid of, get rid of, you know, the project where it is and get the state of the land back to or better than what it was before we came in. So, we actually have to submit a plan to the Minnesota PUC when we submit our permit of how we would go about doing that and make sure that we account for the costs of getting the project, you know, either repowered and continued on or taken down and fixed the area of where we were.
So, just extending that a little bit, Brittany, so when the county deals with other smaller community solar projects, we require bonding for that. So, is PUC going to be holding that? The county going to be, who's going to be?
So, I know that we put up the bond, and I think it is the county. It is the county that holds that from us.
So, and I don't know off the top of my head, but I believe we have a certain dollar amount per megawatt.
Yes.
So, you would be following that same?
Correct. Yep.
Because that would be significant.
Yes, it's a lot. So, yeah, we do upfront do that as a company.
Because that then flows into the decommissioning.
Correct. Correct.
If you aren't doing that, it covers the county to be able to get that done.
Correct. Yes. And we would, we'd take care of that solely. So, we do put upfront a bond that says, you know, and then you hold it.
Okay. And also, one other thing, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think in our initial conversations we had with NextEra, I know all these different community projects and stuff that you guys are involved in, there was some talk at one time about even potential pavement of roads around these areas. Is that, was that a discussion or am I thinking about something else? I'm not trying to hold you that, yes, we're going to pave roads.
Yeah, there's definitely opportunity there for us to, you know, we have to, you know, work with you all to get conditional use permits as well to, you know, whether it's for operation and maintenance facilities and substations, and we do have to have access to roads and things like that. But yeah, that is sometimes, sometimes landowners say, okay, I'll sign, but I need, you know, it kind of works it in the deal. But I don't think you're crazy. I think we did speak.
Okay. And I just want to keep that out in the forefront because County 50, which is on the north side of your project here, is listed on our local option sales tax list
Okay.
in the future of potentially paving that road.
Right.
Yep.
And so, we want to make sure that we're having conversation about that because...
Yep.
Yeah. We'd like to be a partner, right?
I'd like to be, yeah. We'd like to be a partner in that.
Okay.
And again, I'm not asking you to make that commitment today, but I just, I want to bring it up that we have discussions about that.
Yep.
Because that's probably a mile, mile and a half of road there that, you know, we were looking at potentially paving.
I understand. Yeah, we would be more than willing to communicate together and work together. Again, this is a partnership, right?
All right.
I mean, I've, you know, you guys are wonderful to work with already, and it's, you do want to make sure, you know, you made a good point when we talked in November about, you know, when we submit this application, you had concerns that you don't have a say. But to us, that's, it's really important that you do, you know? So, whether it's formal or not, we do want to make sure that we have your buy-in and your support and work together. Because at the end of the day, like, we are in your county, right? So, whether the state gives you a formal opinion or not, it's still important to us that you are involved.
I can tell you personally, I feel a lot better after our bonding conversation we just had, that you're going to follow the county's stuff on that.
Yes, 100%.
I was kind of under the impression that the PUC was going to step in and we're completely out.
No.
That was part of my frustration.
Yes, understood.
Mr. Chair. Sure. And also, there's a public comment period in there where, you know, if they weren't friendly towards us, we could have negative comments, you know? I mean, and I was surprised at the one up in the northwest part of the county. There was a lot of negative comments about it.
Okay. Yeah, I got to look into that now that you say that.
Public utilities had the open, it was a long time where you could comment.
It is. It is. I don't know the exact duration. I think it's got to be a couple of weeks, though. I think there's multiple of them, too.
Multiple, yeah.
So, there's a couple. There's not just one.
A lot of them that I seen were on the environmental portion of it.
Right. Well, there's, it's a big part of Minnesota, though, you know?
One that stuck out in my head was, so what are you going to do when a deer jumps in there and it can't get out? We going to starve it to death for water or whatever, you know?
So, our projects are fenced, so that won't be a problem.
It didn't matter how high the fence was. They still thought one could get in.
Yeah, I understood. I understand.
Does that public hearing process take place during that application or after?
When we submit the application, they, PUC reviews it and then opens up public hearing periods. And then, there's time to, we'll have to go in front of the commission and talk about it and things like that. And people can come in here and speak on behalf or things like that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much for presenting today.
Thanks, Brittany.
Appreciate you keeping us in the loop.
Yeah, of course.
We'll continue on conversation. Thank you.
Our goal is to continue with the submitted, all the application and things, to continue coming more frequently to keep you all up to date. And exactly what's being submitted is important for me personally to keep you guys in the loop, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
And just as an extension, I'm sure Roxanne will be included in that conversation.
Yes. And next week, I'm actually coming back up to meet with her one-on-one because she's not here today.
Yeah, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yep, you got it. Thank you.
All right. Have a great day.
Yes, you, too.
Monty, we'll move on to discussion, possible action on the county board appointees to Criminal Justice Committee.
So, Ms. Chair, it was the direction of the board at your last meeting to bring this issue back for additional discussion, and I believe the desire was to focus on the Criminal Justice Committee. And you could see on the back of this agenda, I have the current appointees and alternate for that. So, I'll defer back to the board and figure out to lead that discussion. Thanks.
Okay. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Brantley, go ahead.
I know from my end, I've been having numerous conversations with Stearns County on the new project that they have going on with the potential new jail. And I think it's going to, in my, in my vision, I think the neighboring counties need to be engaging with Stearns County. There's a great opportunity to collaborate, partnership, no different than we're buying beds everywhere else around the state for different things. This is a, this is a great, great position we could be in if we pre-plan. My last conversation was with Mr. Bertram and basically told him my view and said, why don't we all collaborate together and get this, you know, get a couple of beds for Benton County over there for the mental health and build that jail that way? I think it's a way to get federal money involved. There's a lot of things that can happen. But part of that is getting all of our county departments on board on that, too, as well as Stearns County. And part of that is the criminal justice because them are the people that are going to be, needing to be on board. Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Heinem?
Oh, no, that, I'm sorry. I scrolled through my computer. No, but that is true. I think what we've got to do in the, in the future, and I had a conversation with our administrator, Monty, about this, is that we need to tie these subcommittees to our appointed AMC committees that we sit on, Human Services, Public Safety, Agriculture.
Transportation.
Transportation, Government. Thank you. I haven't served on Transportation or Government, so sorry. You know, but I think we need to align these subcommittees with the committees that we sit in and sit on to do a better job for the county on this. But, but it does. That's hand in hand of everything that even I do with the Human Services. It's all about Human Services and Public Safety.
Okay. So, what are your wishes or what do you see as a resolution here?
From, from my standpoint...
Totally agree.
From my standpoint, I sit on the emergency management portion of AMC and everything that's going on for the most part with this board is being dealt with at that level. And it's all mental health at this point for the most part.
Mental health in the jails.
Yep, exactly.
Correct, yeah.
And that's why I went off on the first side of it.
From looking at, we'd be stupid not to try and collaborate with Stearns County when they're going to build a new facility. I mean, we don't, we, we've been that route, Monty, to look at remodeling the jail a little bit, and it's way more than...
I've forgotten the ears this morning, so I got to...
You forgot your ears. Okay. I said, we've been that route, looking at the jail, what it would cost to remodel over there, you know, and it was substantial amount of money.
It was a band-aid.
We had an old estimate to add sales to intake. It's over $1 million, and that estimate was, gosh, five centuries old now. So, I'm sure it's substantially higher now.
So, I mean, why would we want to remodel when they're be, you know, doing the work for us?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner Kapinski, but I think the plan was that if we could utilize their mental health units over there
Yeah.
and keep the outlying counties, Benton, maybe Malax, Morrison, whatever, that we would take their, lack of better words, lower-level offenders, maybe DWIs or something like that, where we weren't dealing with the mental health issue stuff here, right? And every county wouldn't have to be doing that.
Yes. Now, now, obviously, there's a big caveat to that is we are not Stearns County, and we're not designing this, and we got to get them on board. And I think that there's a long process that they're going to have to go through to get this funding and stuff. to get this funding and stuff. So I think collaborating with them.
But it sounds like they're open for that discussion though.
They're open for it. I think they've got, the dollar value is, is pretty high. So I think, I think they got some hurdles to overcome.
Mr. Chair, so this has been a two-fold operation between Commissioner Kapinski and myself. I've been working with the human services end of it and Commissioner Kapinski's been working with the law enforcement end of it. So we've been taking it from two different approaches to see how we can form this, uh, form something.
So as long as it's part of criminal justice, are you suggesting that maybe that we appoint Commissioner Kapinski to the criminal justice?
I think the point is here right now is Commissioner Heinen and Commissioner Schlangen are on the Benton County Criminal Justice Committee. And I, I believe the, the thought process is, is that Kapinski and Schlangen would probably swap if that's what the end result's going to be. So it would be Kapinski and Heinen would be.
Because of this, because of the way it's tied in.
Excuse me? Yeah?
Yes. I think.
I think that's the pro.
I think from the criminal justice end of it, your human services interacts with that department and then it coincides with the emergency management portion of mine. So that, that would be my thought.
Beth, any comments?
That sounds good to me.
So you, in this case, if we were to swap, I assume then Commissioner Schlangen would be an alternate?
That's fine with me.
All right. Well, then to move on with it, then I'm going to move that we reappoint Commissioner Kapinski to the Benton County Criminal Justice Committee along with Commissioner Heinen and then Commissioner Schlangen would become the alternate on that committee.
And I'll second that.
Any other discussion? While we're on the alternates, and to just maybe think of this, board, please remember that if you have committee assignments and you're not able to make your assignments, that you please contact your alternates so that they can potentially attend those meetings. Any other discussion? Benton County Criminal Justice Committee assignment. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. Monty, we'll move on to schedule a public hearing on the revocation of County Road fifty right away.
Just if I may have a moment here. I have a presentation I'm going to draw up for you too, so.
Next Era probably burned up all your stuff you had there. Oh, sorry, Brittany's still here.
Speaker right over my head, which definitely helps. I've been here twenty years and I think I've forgotten my little electronic devices a couple of times.
What was that?
Those days.
At least it just wasn't the bad reason.
Oh, come on, go to me. Help me out here. Okay. Alrighty. Okay. All the beeps and whistles are happening. Okay, let's go to the presentation, so.
Should we start the meeting over?
All right. I think we're ready.
Go ahead.
Why are we here? Well, we're, to, to cut to the chase, this is all about setting the conditions that will allow the city of Foley to acquire the property that it needs for its order control facility. And as we understand, is before the, the wastewater can enter the Saint Cloud system, they must apply a chemical, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name of that chemical, but they must introduce into the wastewater a chemical before it enters their system. And they've chosen this location as a, a place for about a ten-by-ten structure where they would store and also have the ability, again, to introduce this chemical into the wastewater. Big picture here, you can see, if you kind of get your bearings, here's the intersection of, of Trunk Highway ninety-five and twenty-three. And then just on up the road, you see this little bu, uh, bubble or balloon. This is the approximate location of, of where the city wishes to locate this structure. So we'll zoom in now. So here's the intersection of County Road fifty with the Township Road, Sixty-Fifth Avenue Northeast. You know, for those folks that remember, fifty used to continue on this way. And you remember how it used to go between these two houses down the hill and then join up with Trunk Highway twenty-three at the time? When Mendat reconstructed twenty-three to four lanes, they totally moved the access farther to the east and eliminated that old, that old down-the-hill little section. But you're, you're kind of left, what was left then was this, this little triangle-shaped island of, of land. And I believe when the city was designing its system, they felt, hey, this is a great place to put this order control facility. So we discovered that this land is, is, it's kind of, it's complicated, that's for sure. A portion of the little triangle, we own outright in, in a, in a, in a method called fee title. In other words, we're the free and clear owner that was given to us by the state of Minnesota. And there's another little strip actually, which is an easement. It's on, it's on the, the side that's closest to the farm field. So again, just kind of get your bearings. This is the little triangle we're talking about. So let's move forward. So this is a drawing which was created by Bolt Mank for the city of Foley. And this shows you the, the so-called fee title section, the little triangle. So here's where I'm taking this, is, is, our goal again is to, is to basically put this land in a condition that will allow the city to acquire it. So we kind of have to follow two paths, one for the fee title section and another one for the easement section. So I'm going to focus first on the fee title section. Again, there's your little triangle right there. So here's the, the basic of the process. We're going to use the term revoke. So we could take action to revoke this area to the township. We've got to give the township notice, the township supervisor a thirty-day notice by certified mail that we're going to take this action to revoke. We have to then have a public hearing in the township. And what we're going to propose to you today is you have a public hearing on March fifteenth at six-thirty at Minden Town Hall. And then revocation will occur upon the board adoption of a resolution to revoke to the township. And then that part, it's, it's not ours anymore and it's up then to the city to negotiate its acquisition with the township. Let's see, what else they want to mention about this? Oh, I should, I should have backed up for a second. It's about two weeks ago, we had a meeting here of all the interested parties to work out this timeframe. So we had folks in the city, it was Mark and then Sarah from the city. Mark Ebner was here in his capacity as the township board chair. Mark Lloydell from Highway was here and Roxanne was here as well. So we all, we're in together in the same room to scope out the process and work out these dates. This is the date of the township's regular meeting in March. It's actually the day after the annual meetings, but it's a day after. And then I believe their regular meeting starts at seven PM that night. So this, then, they'd already be there for their meeting and it would allow them to, to be there as part. But, but when it comes down to it, it's actually your meeting. It's not a township meeting. It's your meeting, but it'll be at the town hall. So then work on the shell and she's been drafting up all the necessary resolutions to work with Mark Lloydell. So that's the fee title section. Let's move on then. So here is the easement portion, again, closest to the farm field. And again, we're not the fee title owner. So a different process there to kind of discard that, that part. And this is the part, so we're going to use the term in this instance, vacate. So we could take action to vacate that to the underlying fee title owner. And our plan is to ask you all to adopt a resolution to vacate on February twenty-first. So again, Michelle's working on that resolution for February twenty-first. We then post that resolution for ten days. We serve it by civil process to the adjacent landowners. And then final action to vacate basically occurs when we have evidence of posting, evidence of service, and we file that with the order to treasure. And we expect that to happen the week of February twenty-seventh. And so here, just to wrap up, so we're going to ask you today to adopt the resolution that sets a public hearing for March fifteenth on the fee title section. February twenty-first, you'll adopt the resolution to vacate. March fifteenth, you'll hold the public hearing. And either at March, that March fifteenth meeting or then your next county board meeting on the twenty-first, you could adopt the resolution to revoke the fee title section. I need to discuss with Michelle, are we going to be prepared or ask the board to adopt the resolution that night at the township? Or maybe your next board meeting is the twenty-first. One thing that trying to do here is, this, this seemed kind of rushed, but the goal, and you can see down here in the last bullet point, the goal is the process is complete by May first. That's when the city wants to have possession of the property that it needs so the dozers can start to roll and they can start construction of this facility. One thing I wanted to mention is that the city will need to actually plat this, this parcel that they acquire. It can be done administratively, so it doesn't have to go through planning commission. One little, one little possible hiccup is that if it's possible that they don't achieve the necessary setbacks, they may to go to do board of adjustment and, and seek some variances. Setbacks to the road, setbacks to the adjacent property line. When, when the, the folks in the city were here visiting with us, we made sure that they were crystal clear on the possibility of needing variances and what the timeframe is to get a variance. And also the timeframe to go through the plating process administratively with plan and zoning. I, I, you know, the May first deadline is aggressive. I hope we can get there. One thing I wanted to make clear, Mr. Chair, and that is basically our handoff to the city should occur on or around March fifteenth. That's the goal is we hand off and at that point then moving forward, it's the city to work with the township and the adjacent, and, and the, the easement property owner on any necessary acquisition that they may. And I, and I would imagine they're going to be doing that concurrently. I believe they've already had some conversations with the landowner and the township. So I imagine a lot of that will happen concurrently with, with our process. So today, we're just asking you to adopt the, I believe it's a resolution in your packet. It's, it's a pub, excuse me, it's a public hearing notice. And again, that's from March fifteenth at six-thirty in Minden Town Hall and that would be on the revocation of the fee title portion.
Members, if I may, just a reminder to the county board that if the city would have to pursue variances through the board of adjustment, that the board of adjustment's the final decision maker. There's no appeal to the county board if they were denied a variance. So I'm just reminding everyone of that process.
This seems like a great procedure.
To get it done, yeah.
To get it done.
Get it done. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing for March fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three at six-thirty at the Minden Township Hall to take public testimony on the proposed revocation of County Road fifty right away to Minden Township.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that public hearing?
I'm, I'm just with the issue about the, the county setbacks to make sure we're not just, we're keeping the safety level.
Well, you know, Commissioner Schlangen and, and members of the board, I know when we discussed with the city, one thing that they definitely, like in an initial drawing that I saw from them is that they, they really wanted to achieve the necessary setbacks in the road. So they were pushing the facility as deep as they could into the property as they could. The only issue though is it creates a setback problem with the adjacent landowner setback to property line. But they were doing it, yeah, they were, they were definitely wanting to push it back from the road to, to address safety issues.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, getting back on the safety deal, there's only so fast you can go around there. It's all curves and stop signs and, and stuff like that. So I, I believe the, the city's going to do everything in their, in their power to rectify any of that.
The climate that I made to the city is like, well, you know, if they do need to acquire a little more land into the farm field, I believe the farmer could still farm it.
Yeah, correct.
The, 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 the structure won't be tuning into the.
It's the setbacks.
Right, yeah, exactly.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you, Monty.
Sure.
Bob, assign commissioner designee as a member of the TRICAP board.
All yours, Bob. Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
As stated, I'm here to ask that Brent Marshak be assigned to the TRICAP board per the board's leading on this. So I ask that you approve. Brent?
All right. Commissioners, any questions?
Thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Heinen.
Thanks for volunteering, Brent.
I'm pretty excited. Thank you for the follow-up on this, Bob and Brent. Appreciate that. Obviously, I was the one that brought this up and so with that, I'm going to make a motion to assign Brent Marshak as the commissioner designee for the TRICAP board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good day. All right, we're going to turn it over to the Human Services Board Chair, Commissioner Heinen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Called order the Human Services Board, approve or amend the agenda. Bob, got anything to add?
What changes?
Board, anything to add?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, a call to question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda, item one and two.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? If not, a call to question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Bob, anything else to add?
I have nothing further.
Great. Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you, Bob.
You were adjourned at nine forty-three. I'll turn it back over.
You came in at nine forty-three and you get right out of it at nine forty-eight. That's pretty good. All right, we'll, we'll reconvene our regular board meeting. Mark Lloydell, provide an engineer's update.
Morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Let me just go and grab here. So last time we had talked, we were going to bring up a question on where are we sitting with local option sales tax? So this is again news for highway purposes. But since last time we had a hearing afterwards and people waiting, we decided to postpone it to this meeting. So just, just a quick, brief presentation of where things are at. We started collecting in twenty nineteen, kind of in the fall. So this is kind of a summary bar chart that my accountant and highway department put together. So you can kind of see each year it's been kind of rising. Entering into twenty twenty-three, there's a lot of unknowns, you know? Some people talk about a recession, some people say things are going to stay stagnant. But that's kind of where we're at right now. Entering into twenty twenty-three, it didn't, we just received yesterday. This didn't include one of our payments that we did receive yesterday. But we, and then I'll just bring another presentation of, this is a bar chart of each month. You'll notice two different colors. There's a color blue and then there's another color that's orange. We, Department of Revenue estimates how much we're going to receive each month. And we usually get that around the first week of the month. So we just received January's yesterday. And then I think it's around the middle of the month. That's when we receive a little bit, like, not really the second half, it's not really half, but the second payment for the previous month. So actually December, you'll notice, we still actually haven't received the, the final, I guess, amount for December. Comparatively, I guess, you can kind of see, I mean, these are just month by month, but we take December, the first payment and then we compare it to December of twenty twenty-one. We're just slightly higher. So it almost seems like it's, appears, but that we're leveling off. But I guess, who knows, I guess? So who's got the crystal ball? With all the projects we have scheduled slotted for this year, I am, if we, if I project the same revenue as last year, we will be about a hundred thousand dollars in the hole. But we may get that additionally. So we will be completely used up at, at the end of the year. A projection is to use it all up. But again, we'll be continuing to bring in revenue for local option sales tax. So so far to date, about ten million dollars the county has brought in. And like I said, that'll be spent through this construction season and past projects.
Great.
Mr. Chair, just so everybody knows, that ten mil has been spent on roads.
Yeah, yeah.
No good point.
And bridges. I think a little bit was on bridges too.
Correct, yeah.
Bridges and roads.
It's nice seeing those signs out there.
Yeah, they stick out nice.
Yep.
Mark, maybe just briefly from our discussion this morning, I know you highlighted that twenty-three will be the largest road construction project in Benton County history.
Yeah, as far as I'm aware, it's the largest construction year in Benton County history in terms of, I think, costs, in terms of construction costs and as well as miles. We're estimating, I think it's like, I think fifty-two miles of road that we are redoing, resurfacing or reclaiming and paving. So it's a very robust year. I'm, I'm very excited.
And about thirteen million, I think you.
Yeah, estimated, yeah.
That's the estimate, right?
Yeah, somewhere in that range, twelve to fourteen, so.
Okay. Great. Commissioner Heinen?
Mr. Chair, thank you. So, Mark, I have to ask you this question, being Commissioner Kapinski and myself are pushing CASA one and twenty-nine. Where are we with contracts with the landowners that we actually have the right of way to along the twenty-nine, the future twenty-nine corridor?
Yeah, I haven't. Yeah, I haven't done anything with that yet.
You mean the contracts that they're farming it or?
Yeah.
Land leases, I think the term is.
Land leases. There, there's nothing in writing.
Yep.
There's, there's no contracts out there. We really need to get that established because Commissioner Gopinski and myself are really pushing this at the federal and state level.
Correct.
For funding.
I actually just had a conversation and, and I think we need to bring it back up to the landowners there that they are on county land. It is not their land at that point, you know?
How, if there's not a contract in place, how was it established what the rental rate was?
Well, I think, again, I was using the term lease.
So are they leasing it for nothing?
I think we really, we really should have land lease agreements in place with the, the landowners from whom we purchased right away, what, almost a decade ago now? And I think it, it probably stands a reason is that completion of this Beltway project is, is a ways off. And I know Michelle is with us actually via GoTo, and I'm not sure she has any updates on any legal developments on this matter. But I, I, my, my takeaway from that discussion was that somehow the absence of leases could somehow potentially jeopardize our right of ownership, which would be pretty devastating if that's the case, because, you know, a fair amount of money was spent to acquire that property. So.
Mr. Chair, we, you know, we heard from Mark this morning and he's just swamped with work. Is there any way maybe we could go outside that office to get these leases done?
Lease agreements?
Yeah.
I, I, you know, you might want, again, I see Michelle's with us via GoTo.
I mean, he was talking, you know, he's got some ninety-hour weeks that he's put in. We can't expect him to, to contact, I don't know how many landowners it is, but, you know, it's, you gotta meet with them, get an agreement, get it signed. Maybe we need to go outside.
I, I, I would imagine, I, I would have some consultation with Carl Schmidt and get his opinion on that matter, but I would.
I don't know, that's my opinion. Mark, could you maybe minimize that, please, on your, on your thing there? See if Michelle is available or wants to comment?
We, we only fired up GoTo recently, so Michelle may have not realized it.
See if she's on there. Michelle, there you are. Are you with us this morning?
She might not be. She's probably coming back for ditch authority, my hunch, yeah, so.
We love ditch authority. So, Mr. Chair, so Monty, will you address this with Michelle then?
Yeah. Well, why don't, between Mark and I, we'll just check in with Michelle. I would think we really should talk to Carl. That's our first stop is Carl.
Yep.
And get his assessment of their ability to draft these lease agreements. And if he says, hey, we're just too booked up, we could explore outside counsel. I, Rinky might be the, the usual suspect to go to, I suppose.
It, it, Mr. Chair, it might behoove us to basically send a letter out first saying that, as you know, this is the right of way for County Road, the new County Road twenty-nine. We are in the process of drafting, you know, just a heads up instead of having them get the lease agreement.
In the mail?
In the mail.
Oh, there, Michelle is now with, you, you know, I think that's a great idea.
Hi, Michelle. I don't know if you were listening in on our conversation or not, but.
I caught the last one. We actually drafted lease agreements back in the day. The county board at that time chose not to execute them. So there's already existing lease agreements ready to go if we get those executed.
Can I ask you why they chose not to execute them?
I don't know. If they were obliged to do so.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I still believe a, a letter heads up before an actual lease contract goes to them would be a good idea. Is it fair to say, Michelle, that since those agreements were drawn up, that you have identified who all those landowners are then?
I believe we did, yes.
Okay.
And I worked with Chris on that, so there's probably something in a file on what was sent out to those landowners and who would be impacted.
Okay, thank you. Then maybe like Commissioner Heinen suggested, between Monty and Mark and Michelle, you can have that conversation of keeping this ball rolling.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up. All right, anything else on that? Anything else, Mark? Sorry.
Um, next thing I just wanted to talk to you about is permitting. Just thought I'd give you a recap. If you have the time here, permits of twenty twenty-two that our department has processed. So these are kind of a list of different types of permits that, and they all deal with the County Road right of way. We have drainage permits, entrance permits, overweight and oversized permits. So if some, if a hauler is over twenty thousand, or eighty, eighty, eighty thousand pounds, they have to get an overweight permit. There's utility permits, which is, also includes anything within the road right of way. That's not any of these other entrances. Special farm permits, a lot of, and then special road construction permits and special road permits. So that's four hundred and sixteen permits that our, our staff in the Highway Department has approved within those last year that go through our department.
Mark, could you give an example of a special farm permit?
Yeah, special farm permit, a good example would be Pilgrim's Pride. In that case, they can apply to haul for, because it's for farm products, delivering to the chicken barns. They can apply to, depending on the axle of their vehicle, they can go over that weight and pay a fee per truck to be able to be over, not to a certain point. Like, I can't remember the amount off the top of my head. But yeah, and then there is also one for construction permits. So especially, special overweight, yeah, permits for construction roadway use. Yeah, I think it's ninety thousand for a six axle or, yeah, ninety-seven thousand pounds for a seven axle truck.
Okay, thank you.
And we collect, Mr. Chair, we collect a fair amount of fees from them too.
Yep, yep. And that's kind of the idea is it's creating a damage to our road. Same with overweight permits.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have the, I mean, it's pretty much the final, but unofficial. We did receive the state aid allotment for twenty twenty-three. It's in process, I guess. And again, I think, I may have brought this up. There was concern early on with the state. They had projected, I mean, it was a great concern, our part of, of seven percent reduction. The unofficial is two point four percent reduction from our state aid. Now that comes in their state aid construction, their state aid maintenance, their state aid construction municipal, and then their state aid maintenance municipal. So there's kind of four buckets of money that we do receive. Overall, again, it was a reduction of two point four percent compared to twenty twenty-two allotment. Next board meeting, I will bring the Mindat Hall Road Agreement for CASA one. They are talking just of using Mayhew Lake Road for one year instead of the two years that was, they had previously presented. So that'd be using Mayhew Lake Road one to three, and then over to three to back to US Highway ten. And then last thing is we have the H step application for that roundabout at twenty-nine thirty-three. We should find out if we're recipients of that money at the end of this week. They told me first week of February, so I'm watching my emails.
All right.
Mr. Chair, that, that's the first Lego in the block set.
Yep, it is.
First one, sure.
Uh, Mr. Chair, or, uh, Mark, are you going to the ditch conference?
Um, I want to, but I have the seven W meeting tomorrow for our federal application for CASA two project, which is supposed to take till two thirty. I have two hundred and eight pages of plans to review. And I've got, the state aid keeps bugging me that I have twenty-one bridge inspections that I gotta have entered and, and reviewed by Morrison County by next Wednesday, so unfortunately I'm not.
So you can be there by five-ish?
I gotta figure a way, you guys know a way to sleep, not sleep at night. I can, I can try to make it. I want, I really wanted to go and it's just not, it's just not conducive, so.
And I just, I want to thank you too, Mark. Commissioner Pop and I typically try to meet with you and/or Mark Ebner, you know, every time before a board meeting. I know we haven't done that every time, but that's kind of our goal. And I appreciate the time that you bring in and highlight some things for us, so thank you for doing that.
Sure.
All right, any other questions for Mark while he's here? On his update, I know he's going to be around probably for ditch authority, but anything on the engineer's update? All right, thank you, Mark. Monty, presentation by Northland Reliability Project.
Will I get you set up? Get your laptop?
We do.
Awesome, thanks.
Okay.
Do the PowerPoint or the flash drive?
It's the same PowerPoint slide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thanks. Fill in your calendar.
Which one?
Yeah.
Uh, you can go ahead and.
Thanks for the.
I missed a couple of them.
You're on it.
Huh?
Ditch authority agenda.
I know, she sent, I was gonna, I was gonna show you.
Yeah, I said, came up and pinged. I should have turned my volume down. We kept going back trying to find the agenda for tomorrow and every time you click on it, it does the pre-registration tab. Okay, great. Now she sent it out. Asking. He was, she's on.
Okay, great. Well, I'm Brian Hunker and I work for Great River Energy as a transmission permitting project manager. We also have Dan Lesher here, who's the manager of permitting and land rights for Great River. So I understand this is the first time we're here in front of the Benton County Board for the Northland Reliability Project. I appreciate everybody's time today. And we're just here to provide you with some project information. And if we have a little bit of time for questions, that'd be great as well.
Hey, good morning, welcome.
Thank you. So the Northland Reliability Project is jointly proposed by Great River Energy and Minnesota Power, so it is a joint project fifty-fifty. I'm probably going to go pretty quick through these slides just to save us some time here. It is a new transmission line project and a transmission rebuild. The new line segment portion is going to go from the Iron Range Substation near Grand Rapids down to Riverton near Kuna and then over to the Benton County Substation right outside of St. Cloud. Rebuild segment is the segment that goes from Benton County down to the Big Oaks Substation. So this project came about through MISO, which is Mid-Continent Independent System Operator, and they're the grid operator for the upper part of the Upper Midwest from North Dakota over to Michigan. And they developed a study called the LRTP or Long Range Transmission Plan that had eighteen projects through the Upper Midwest. Obviously, ours is just one of those projects, which is shown here, highlighted in, in blue. And all of these projects too are not done independently. There is existing transmission that connects them together, so they're, they're not islands. So this project, as our generation resources are shifting, the project does provide some voltage stability to the grid. It also increases capacity as other generators come onboard and as other customers come onboard. We do need to increase that capacity. Provides flexibility to incre, to meet future demands of the transmission grid. And then it also provides resilience to weather various storms that may, or other weather events that may come about. So it does provide a lot of voltage support and the ability to transfer power from northern Minnesota to central Minnesota. Kind of think of the project as two segments. So the segment shown as orange is from Benton, or Iron Range to Riverton to Benton County. And that is the new transmission line. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a double circuit three forty-five KV transmission line as well. The segment two is a rebuild of two existing transmission lines, and that's from Benton County down to the Big Oaks Sub. So Benton County specifically has got both segment, both segments one and two in, involved with the project.
Mr. Chair, could you just ask a quick question?
Yeah.
I, I, what is a three forty-five KV double?
Sure, I'll, I'll get into that. I, I've got a little diagram that shows it.
Oh, perfect.
But a single circuit transmission line has got three wires across. That's one circuit. Double circuit will have six wires. So each of the configurations of three wires equals one circuit.
Okay.
And then it carries three hundred and forty-five thousand kilovolts on both of those circuits. So segment one is a, like I said, a new double circuit three forty-five KV transmission line, roughly a hundred and thirty miles in length from Iron Range down to Benton County. This line does provide us with opportunities to route adjacent to existing transmission. And that's really been the focus of our routing efforts to date. So we do plan to expand the Iron Range Substation, put in a new substation at Riverton and possibly do some line configurations there, and then expand the Benton County Sub. Segment two, which is replacement of an existing two thirty-five, or two hundred and thirty kilovolt transmission line into the double circuit three forty-five, and that's approximately twenty miles in length. And then we're try, we're going to try to do that on the existing right of way easement that we have for that project. This talks about some of the additional improvements, but they're a little bit easier to see on, on this slide. So we are also going to rebuild an existing single circuit three forty-five KV transmission line that goes from the Benton County Sub down to the Big Oaks Sub. The Big Oaks is a new substation that's being built as a part of a separate project. And then the exist, the rebuild of the two thirty KV line will go from the Benton County Sub down to the Shurco Sub. So this map is actually the same one that I handed out in your packet there. I handed out a one that doesn't have an aerial photo background on it, just because it is a little bit easier to see. So the, the blue line that's shown down the center of it is the existing two thirty KV line. And, and I, that is our primary focus for our routing efforts to date. The outer darker blue lines are route corridor for the project. And we have, so you can see basically within Benton County that we are trying to route adjacent to existing transmission from the Morrison County, Benton County line, line all the way down to the Benton County Substation. So we are going to expand that Benton County Sub. And then the red line at the bottom of the map that goes south for about three quarters of a mile and then traverses east, that's the existing three forty-five line that will be rebuilt. The blue line that diagonals out of the Benton County Sub is the two thirty line that'll be rebuilt to the double circuit three forty-five. So we started the project by defining a study area, which was a, a pretty large area. We've narrowed that down into a route corridor, which is shown on the maps in front of you. That route corridor is essentially a mile buffer of existing transmission facilities. We have widened it just north of the Benton County Sub. So you can see just north, it does, it, I'll say on the east side, does extend out a couple miles. That provides us with some opportunities, look at various routes around routing constraints. Our intention is to, well, last week, over the last couple of weeks, we've actually had a series of public meetings, which I'll provide some more information about. We're going to gather that information from the public meetings and narrow our route corridor into route alternatives, selective route alternative for an application to the Public Utilities Commission for a certificate of need and a route permit application. They'll take, they'll take that route permit applic, or they'll take our route permit application, go through their review process, and then Department of Commerce conducts the environmental review for the PUC. This is a map showing our narrowing of our study area to the route corridor. So you can see it was a fairly wide area that was narrowed down into essentially one mile buffer. We, we have, like I said, expanded it in a couple of areas just to provide us with some opportunities to work with landowners in those spaces. So this is really where we're at on our project, is we're gathering information that will help us in defining our more specific routes. We do that by looking at opportunities such as existing transmission and looking at some constraints, which could be land use, topography, large wetland spans, residences. And then we do look at engineering and construction considerations as well. So we do have a website that's available. Folks can go on there. They can log a comment through our interactive mapper. They can also provide a, a comment directly to us. We do offer people the opportunity for in-person and/or virtual meetings, should they choose that route as well. And we did conduct open houses over the weeks of January twenty-third and January thirtieth. So we, we had about fourteen meetings at seven locations from Grand Rapids all the way down to Becker. The nearest one here was at the Sauk Rapids Government Center that took place on Jan, on January twenty-fifth. So you asked about what, what it's going to look like. The H frame structure shown here on the left is the two thirty KV line. The double circuit three forty-five is shown on the right. So you can see that's a vertical configuration, one side, I'll just say the left side is going to have one circuit. The right side's going to. gonna have one circuit, the right side's gonna have the second circuit on it. We are looking at metal monopoles for this project that are, that are on a concrete pure foundation, allowing, going next to existing rights of way allow us to overlap those rights of way by twenty to thirty feet, therefore narrowing down the overall width that's needed for an easement. Segment two, which is the rebuild, we are looking to do that on the existing easement and this shows the two thirty configuration so that H-frame will be removed and the metal double circuit will be installed, I'm sorry, metal stuck, structure, steel structure. So our schedule is here, we're in twenty twenty-three, we're continuing with the routing. We're gonna look to provide a Route Permit Application to the Public Utilities Commission in late summer, early fall timeframe and that will take us into twenty twenty-four. And at that time, we're gonna do, through twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six, we'll begin land rights, engineering, environmental surveys, we've got ancillary permits associated with the DNR Corps of Engineers. We've got four years of construction plan from twenty twenty-seven to twenty thirty with an in-service date of, of twenty thirty. This shows our, our hotline, you can gain, gather a lot of information on our website. Of course, you can connect with us directly through the hotline or through email. Any questions?
Great, thank you, Brian. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, is this, is this similar to what they did along ninety-four where they did the helicopters and?
Yeah, the exact construction techniques aren't known now and those structures are a monopole steel. Those are, have a, kind of the steel color to them. Ours will, the ones that we are proposing, i- it's called a core ten structure, so it self-weathers into kind of a rust or orange color.
They got them down along fifty-two going south to the Twin Cities.
Right.
And Brian, on those, those H-structures that are being recon, reconstructed, are those wood poles now?
They are, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Brian, I've got a question for you. If we go on the website, can we get further detail going from Riverton to the north?
Absolutely.
In Crow Wing County, so I know where that's going.
Pass your, Gavin?
I didn't wanna say that.
Oh. We have.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we, we have a Google Earth type interface on there where you can zoom around and take a look at everywhere, every spot. We also have hard copy maps as well that have an aerial photo background on them.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
If it's directly over, you might get residual.
Or free energy.
Members, any other questions for Brian or Dan?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you for coming in and, and being proactive as letting us know what's going on.
Absolutely.
Yeah, appreciate that, gentlemen.
Yeah, definitely. We hope to come back too, so thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move on to Commissioner meeting updates. Who would like to start?
Commissioner Kupinski.
Bye, Ken. All right, obviously, we had our cow yesterday with Human Services. Lots of good things, I think, coming out of that. One of the things that, that I talked to Commissioner Hein about is if, if they don't have a ton of updates, maybe we go to, you know, we don't have to have them just because they're scheduled, you know what I mean? But that's, that's for down the road. Broadband, we're getting there. I think, I think our last, March second is a big day for us to, to have who we're supporting and everything out there, so that, that's a, that's a, that's a big day for us and, and honestly, I think things are falling into place, wouldn't you say?
I agree and actually I would maybe say that there's a potential on the February twenty-fourth Board Meeting that we may be.
Yep.
Bringing something back for the full board to consider, so.
I think that's gonna be a guarantee, actually.
Yep, cuz March, March second's the deadline, to my understanding, that providers have for their next board of board grant.
Correct.
So.
Yesterday, while we were in the cow, I had a, we had a special, uh, emergency medical services board meeting, which I was not able to attend. Actually, Commissioner Jolinski just tried calling me this morning, so I gotta give him a call, find out what's going on. That is probably going to be relating to the opioid settlement and how we support and, and how we figure out how counties are gonna keep this board going with the lack of funding out there. ATP three I was in and that was a, a bad one to start with because it was all numbers and the packet didn't get to us until, I think it came, I, it came Saturday or Sunday and the meeting was Monday and it was.
A lot of information.
A lot of information and, and Vicki from APO apologized and said, said, this usually doesn't happen, it, they just had some issues with getting the, the ATP, getting the stuff out, but it was very informative on, on things that Mark Lloydall deals with all the time on, on projects and everything. There's a carbon, carbon-free, on, it's almost like one-time funding out there, there's a lot of money there, so I know that there's gonna be some grants coming out or some application for grants for, for sidewalks, for bike trails, for things that obviously don't produce carbon, but there's a lot of money in there. Let's see here, we had our GLT meeting, I think that, that's progressing nicely, a lot of information there. Highway twenty-nine, County Road One, Commissioner Hein and I have been really putting some time in on that one. We're getting down there to where hopefully we can have somebody author it in a bonding bill. Now, obviously, if it gets in there, it doesn't mean it's gonna get passed and we've got no crystal ball, like Mark said, on what, what happens out there, but I think we're putting our best foot forward. We've got a lot of partners on it and I, I think there's a lot of, a lot of support all the way through legislature down to all the local municipalities, so Beth, Monte, everybody on the team, thank you for everything you guys do, so. Next thing is the ECRJC meeting, the, the Anoka Regional, where we got the one bed. They are very quickly filling their beds and they're at thirty-one and they can have a total of thirty-eight. And I asked the question, you know, and I, I didn't wanna go down the road of, of saying, well, you know, everybody better jump once it hits thirty-five to get the last three beds, but I was followed up by another commissioner that went the step further that I wasn't going to, so it cleared that up. So I think, I think in the next, I'm gonna say the next four to six months, we better start thinking about a potential second bed or there, all of these facilities are going away, there's actually consortiums that are coming in with three or four counties now and buying two beds and, and stuff like that. And, and with everything going away, in, in this kind of a care, there's not a lot of opportunity out there.
You recall, Jared, the, was it about a forty-dollar savings a day for us to buy a bed?
I think it was three twenty down to two sixty?
Yep.
Okay.
It's.
So eighty bucks.
Yeah, it, it, it's, it, to me, it's not even the savings at this point, it's where do you put these individuals if you don't have that availability? Right now, they got a total of like a hundred and eight beds at this facility that they can move people around, but as all those beds fill up, that opportunity goes to the wayside, so.
Were we, were we a hundred percent use of our bed or not?
Uh, they're gonna come out with some of that, but that's come, that's on that board that, go ahead, Commissioner Hein, you might have some more information.
Correct, so Deb is gonna be bringing us information about that and then information too about is it worthwhile for us to get that second bed sooner than later?
Yeah.
So she'll be bringing that forward to the board, I'm hoping to the board relatively soon.
Cuz if we use it one and a half time or, you know, if we use a bed one and one-half times, I think we can rent that other bed out and we get a proportion of that back.
Right.
But it, it's definitely a, I, I think there was a few people in, on the, online that were kinda like, oh, we better move on something.
Especially everything that's happening right now with children and adults with.
Correct. So that's what I have, okay? Anybody else wanna volunteer or should I pick?
Sure, why not?
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Hein.
Where are we today? Oh, we're the seventh, okay, great. Let's see, yesterday we had the cow, okay? A lot of union meetings, of course. So when Jared was on ECRJC, I was with Commissioner Pop and Blake Paulson, trying to sell our project to him and having him do his due diligence to help us out at the state and at the federal level too. And, and that was a very good meeting, hour, hour and a half meeting, go ahead, Mr. Pop.
He, he kinda, kinda summed it up like reshuffling the deck. He said, there's, there's so many projects that are coming at him and he goes, you get to the bottom of the deck, so when he talks to his counterpart in Washington, they reshuffle it and you're at the top. Cuz he said, you get, you get lost when you're at the bottom. There's no doubt about it and, you know, the projects are multiple, many, many projects that are at him.
And he's got good contacts in DC too.
He's got a counterpart that works similar to what he does here in DC.
So that was a very good meeting, actually, so we're, we're trying to push the envelope to get what we can. I also had a Regional Three Leadership Planning Meeting that I sit on, I'm vice chair of that. Local Workforce Board Development, basically is what it is, very, we actually talked about, I gotta be politically correct here, talked about what our state is doing and what they're putting in the budget for workforce development and all of that. And then they asked me to go to DC with them and I told them, I don't have time right now, so they were kinda disappointed, but is what it is at the end of the day. Then I had a Historical Society, the Historical Society Building, excuse me, is open for research and for walk-ins. We haven't set a tentative date yet for a grand opening, but that'll be coming hopefully in March, so we'll let everybody know about that. Uh, and then just the cows like everybody else, that's all I had, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Schleyen?
Yeah, we were at the MICA meeting, but I went to the Northland, did you guys get to the Northland Rehabilitation Project that they talked about?
I didn't go because I knew they were gonna be here today.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I, I was able to get there and went through with the big guy there, all the hotspots to look for in the county, so they had updates on that. And, yeah, about the road project down, for the four lane down there.
Road project.
The, the bypass. Goes across the bridge at thirty-third.
Twenty-three?
Oh.
Highway ten?
Highway ten, twenty-three?
Yeah, but down, no, no, the one down south where we're doing the twenty-nine corridor that goes around to thirty-third across the river. That, that project goes down through that area too.
So the Highway ten area public hearing, is that what you're talking about?
No, the, um, the, where they're putting the power lines through.
Oh, you're still on the power lines.
Oh, okay, I thought you were talking about the road project.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I got to the road project one too. Um, let's see, was that the, yeah, the belt line was the next project, so yeah, I got down, onto that meeting down at the Crest, Crestview Shops, so. We had the BEP meeting. And then I had First Steps and they got, we approved that grant for them to keep going for a few years and. So they're, and the, they're pretty stable with their, keep increasing with the clients that they have and they're doing, being able to impact the families in our community. Going through their bylaws and agreements, so we'll probably see something on that later. And I had the Council on Aging.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha.
Basically their business and financials. And update on caregiving. And we had.
Just hope I find my hearing when I get home.
RSVP Board. And they're still looking for volunteers, if you can.
I've never lost them yet.
Find seniors that are willing to help.
Are you volunteering too?
I do a little bit.
Good for you.
Try to get some recruits.
Like five thousand dollars.
And know a few people that do help out, so.
Anything else?
I think that was, I think that was it.
All right, thank you, I'll go next. I had the opportunity to tour the Stearns County West Side Facility with our new Auditor Treasurer, Christine Sherbin and Heather were there, it was a good opportunity to kinda walk through their facility and see how they operate and how we may operate someday, so I appreciate them reaching out and was able to meet them there.
Commissioner, I, I, would you feel it'd be useful perhaps for other, the rest of the board to, to see that facility at some point?
Yeah, I think and maybe reach out to our Auditor Treasurer and see if that's something that they wanna go take a tour.
I mean, like the whole facility, everything?
Yeah, everything, yeah, that may be a good.
I've not been since they built the addition.
You know, and they've already changed some things up, so it's interesting to see how they've done that, so a lot of good discussions. Of course, we talked about the MICA, GLT, I was, excuse me, attended my first Highway twenty-three Coalition Board Meeting. It was interesting, I was able to do that online, so that was helpful cuz it's held down in Wilmer. One of the highlights, their annual meeting's gonna be held in Mora this year, so the other end of the corridor and that's, and it sounds like.
That's really surprising, I guess, to me.
Representative Staber's gonna be there, he's committed to be there, so that's good, I think that's gonna highlight that area, especially, and the other thing is, that's seven E, right? So there's some importance there for that, so I'm looking forward to attending that. Commissioner Pop and I were able to attend the Tri-County Solid Waste Hollers Meeting. I thought there was a lot of good discussion that came out of that. One thing that highlighted and it sounds kinda funny, but there was some frustration from the hollers there about the new state rules with cannabis issues and then trying to find drivers because.
Yeah.
Nobody can pass their CDL physicals cuz they're all high, basically. And so it was just, and they were frustrated.
Yeah, they were, they were dead-ass serious.
And they're like, this is really becoming an issue because we can't hire drivers who aren't intoxicated. So I just thought, wow, that's, that's interesting. The week after, we, I, I was able to attend the Tri-County Solid Waste Board Meeting with Pope Douglas and I don't, yeah, you've heard us talk about this in the past, we finally got together with their board. I, I think it was really good because as you all well know, you understand things better when you're face-to-face and so it was this big room full of both boards.
Yep.
And I think we made a lot of headway in, in sharing our frustrations and what our goals are going forward, so we're gonna try really hard to try to meet at least twice a year going forward. Also was involved down at the Sherbin County History Center in Becker, we had our actual kickoff for the One Water One Plan for the Mississippi Project, was well-attended, a lot of good questions and items brought up there, good presentation, so appreciate that opportunity and again, just highlighting the cows that you've all been to with me, so, Commissioner Pop?
Well, way back on the seventeenth, we had our first meeting with the Great River Regional Library. We had a bunch of people in on the book again, perfectly normal, but this time they were all for it. I mean, twenty-five people, I suppose, came in, we allow, you know, ten to fifteen minutes to talk. Yeah, so at least we weren't the, the negative ones this time. We take no action because there's a policy on how you can get a book removed and they, nobody, you know, if one's gonna follow the policy to have it removed, this group's gonna follow the policy to have it stay, so I think you're kinda in there. We did an election of officers and we got Lenzmeyer as vice chair, myself as chair for one more year and Finance Committee is the county commissioners. We had two new county commissioners that come onboard, Tim Denny was from Todd County, was unable to come, he was sick with COVID, he thought, and Tina Dietrich from Wright County seemed like a pretty, pretty good add to that board. And you start the, you know, we had adopted the budget plan already because she's gotta be here in August, so. Then we had, you know, everybody was at MICA. MICA was probably about half-attended, I would suppose, what it normally was, but you know, we had no Olmsted County Commissioners. no Olmsted County Commissioners. They usually show up. No Blue Earth County Commissioners. They usually show up in Wasika.
Weather was a problem.
Weather was the problem there. You know, they had seven to ten inches of snow down there in Blue Earth. So that was it. Um, then we had the, well, of course, the GLT. Um, we had the BEP annual meeting. We had a board meeting afterwards. Uh, that was pretty much, uh, a lot of stuff that, you know, confidential, Amanda can't blow it on the limb too much. She's got a couple of projects out there that she's working with. Uh, the site selectors have selected Benton County as one of the project, substantial project if she can.
And with that, and sorry to interrupt, but I was, I thought I heard Brittany say they were gonna become members of BEP.
Right. She had, she, we po- we, we prompted her when we were at the first meeting in October or November. And then Amanda's been meeting with her and they will become members, yeah.
Great.
And then, uh, Mr. Heinand covered one of the deals that I met with, uh, we met with Mark Cook from Compier. They are thinking on dropping their membership.
How'd that go?
Um, I think, okay. I think there's different avenues they can work with, um, because they can, Compier can go into further processing of food and support, you know, they just didn't see a value with their ag-related loans that they could, that, you know, BEP could do anything for them on the, on the value. We did bring up the East Central Sales Tax and some of the other things that, that, you know, they provided to help their, their customers with over the course of the years. And I think, uh, they left in a good deal. It wasn't only Mark Cook, it was, uh, James Mica.
Okay.
Yeah. And he's, um, he's more their regional office. They ch- they, they do nineteen counties in Minnesota, almost every county in Wisconsin and a huge amount of counties in Illinois and Indiana. And they only have so many dollars to put out there for things like BEP membership. Um, their last membership was, uh, I think twelve hundred bucks. So, but, you know, twelve hundred bucks here, twelve hundred bucks there is. So I think we'll, we'll, you know, um, they were more interested in what we can do for them for the Little Rock Watershed and the Irrigators than they were about becoming the members. Cause Mark Cook is now the president of Mississippi, uh, Valley Irrigators, which runs from, you know, all the way from Becker all the way up north. So he was more interested about what we can do for him for that.
Okay.
You know, and that, that's his business.
Yeah.
Um, they got a lot of money going on. He did talk about there was a, uh, a new potato processing facility that was looking at coming into either Minnesota or Wisconsin. And they want absolutely nothing to do with Minnesota because of their permitting process.
Overregulation.
Water usage regulations. So they're gonna go someplace in Wisconsin.
Right.
Yeah. It seems like they're financing that one too. Um, so that was kinda the deal. Then I was with Scott. I thought that meeting was really good too with the haulers. Um, you know, and I, I think it took a long time to bring out what they say, the big elephant in the room, that they're gonna lose twenty-eight million dollars this year in Pope Douglas.
Yeah. And they're, and they're seeking almost thirteen million in bonding.
Yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
That could be explained.
The Tri-County Board and the Pope Douglas Board, well, and especially the Tri-County Board, we've got work cut out in front of us for the future because this contract goes through twenty thirty, thirty?
Yeah, twenty.
And we have the option of reducing tonnage starting in twenty-six. So if we exercise that, what's our plan B?
Yeah, we gotta have a.
We need a plan B. And they need a plan B because if it's not coming there.
Yep.
Right? And as we talk about a lot, it's already February of twenty-three.
Yeah.
And to get these contracts in place, there's a lot of work coming there. And, and we wanna see them be successful. I mean, what's our options?
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it, it's good to use it, but, you know.
Has to make some sense.
You gotta operate within your means and I, I have a hard time believing that they really.
Well, I was a little shocked because I asked their executive director how the, how the bonding meeting went when you're presenting to your bonding agent, you've got twenty-eight million in the red. But the state's just gonna keep handing money.
Well, I mean, someplace in there, the taxpayers from Pope and Douglas Counties are gonna be on the hook for this twenty-eight million bucks.
Can you say lovey?
And I think, you know, I, I think Douglas County is probably well situated to handle that, but I don't think Pope County is. I don't think at all. You know, that's a rural county with what Glenwood is his biggest city. So I don't, I don't know where that's going, but.
Anything else?
Nope.
All right. Uh, before I forget, we move on. Uh, thank you for the Board of Commissioners Policy Manual, finished and revised. Thank you. Commissioners, I encourage you to take a look at it if you have any questions.
Mr. Chair, one more thing. I was on the, uh, NACO broadband meeting too. So just a lot of pre-planning. You've seen the MICA, uh, meeting, board meeting got moved to Thursday now.
Yeah, okay. All right. Um, any regular general comments or anything from anybody? Committee of the whole?
Okay. Here we go.
Nothing.
No, no, and no.
Buckle your seatbelts.
Oh. Monty, Monty, Monty.
Oh, this is some fun stuff. Uh, the AMC Leadership Summit is March twenty-ninth through thirty-first. At Grandview Lodge in Nispa. Uh, registration and lodging, uh, is now open. Uh, so perhaps if we could get an indication of interest, so Beth could begin that process to re- to register you and make hotel reservations. So as perhaps a show of hands, who, who is interested? March twenty-ninth through thirty-first?
I would say whoever hasn't been there and wants to stay involved with the county board should go there. Once. I've been there ever since I've been on the board. And I, I actually get a lot out of it.
Twenty-ninth through the thirty-first?
Yes, sir.
I guess, mark me down for now, Beth, and please, if, I know you do a good job, but if you could indicate when the cancellation needs to be done by?
Yeah. So, so far, we're hearing Commissioner Heinand, Commissioner Johnson.
Yeah, I got a, on the thirty-first, we have a state board meeting at.
Okay, so you're in it. Commissioner Schlangen?
Um, I'll double check my calendar. I'll plan on going.
Signing up for now.
Yeah.
Karen said no.
Nope, I'm out of town.
Never one.
You on vacation?
Uh, conference.
You already have on your calendar the GSDC Annual Meeting. That's next week, February sixteenth. They ask for registrations though, so could we have a show of hands of who would like to be registered for the GSDC Annual Meeting? That is at seven thirty, excuse me. It begins at seven fifteen AM. Uh, I believe that's at Capital One.
Yes.
Show of hands on GSDC Annual Meeting. Uh, Commissioner Schlangen, Commissioner Kapinski?
I can't make that. I'm a maybe, sorry.
Commissioner Schlangen and Commissioner Kapinski, okay? Got it. Transportation Day at the Capitol, that's being sponsored by the Transportation Alliance. That is March first, Capital Ridge Hotel, Saint Paul. Um, they do ASCA registrations beforehand. Uh, the event begins at nine AM, March first, Saint Paul. Uh, again, perhaps a show of hands. Commissioner Schlangen?
I cannot go.
I will go to that. I'm gonna be there anyway.
Be good. So just Commissioner Schlangen?
And Pop.
Commissioner Pop?
I may go. I'm not sure yet.
You may. We'll go ahead and register. I don't see a cost on this. So, okay, all right.
Beth, then maybe please put me down because I could potentially go midday. I just didn't wanna.
Is that?
Register with there's money involved and not go.
Is that a one-day conference? Is that a one-day conference?
The Transportation Alliance advantage is just a one-day event, right? Just a one-day event. I, as I recall quickly, they, they try and arrange you to visit legislators, uh, and they bring in legislators to speak and so on.
Yeah, I, and the times I've went, they've always bring them to you. You don't have to go over to the Capitol. And quite honestly, there's a lot of sales pitch.
Okay, well.
Okay.
I'll, I'll try to make that, so tentatively, register me too.
Let's move on then. The Highway Twenty-three Coalition Annual Meeting is Friday, April fourteenth in Mora. That's at eleven thirty to one.
What is that?
Friday, April thir- fourteenth in Mora. That is the, the Highway Twenty-three Coalition Annual Meeting. Um, I don't think gonna ask for any, any, any commitments today. Just wanted to get that on your calendars. Okay.
So everybody's invited to that one?
A couple of things we need to get in the record, uh, which we scheduled previous on a Cal calendar, but did not announce them at a board meeting. One was the BEP Quarterly Meeting, which was January twenty-sixth, seven thirty at Stock Rapids. Wanna get that in the record. Second was the GLT Meeting. That, this one is off in the future. February twenty-eighth, nine AM, here in the boardroom at GLT. That's our next meeting with those folks. Okay. Almost done.
What?
Noah, you've gotta cut both.
This is usually about the time the board schedules, uh, what we describe as the annual goal-setting meeting. Uh, if I remember correctly, last year we, I think we had that down at Jack and Jim's.
Yep.
Yep.
Uh, last two years.
Sure. So, uh, I guess I'm just looking for you all possibly to toss out a date. Do you think that works for the five of you? Uh, let me offer that next week is kinda out.
We gotta look at March.
Yeah.
Into March?
Yeah, I'm busy. My February calendar's booked.
Okay.
Cause we got AMC, the twenty, the twenty-second.
Maybe someone can be the leadoff hitter and toss out a date in March then.
What about, uh?
Monday the thirteenth?
Oh, I'm gone. Monday the thirteenth, seventh, when you're gonna be, I was gonna suggest after our board meeting. Um, I could do Monday the thirteenth.
What was that date?
Monday the thirteenth.
The rest of you, how's that look?
Okay, that works here.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Beth?
I think so.
Okay. Dwellem?
So Monday the thirteenth of March, Jack and Jim's. How about ten AM? I think last time we started at ten AM and then we wrapped up.
I switch it up and go to Jimmy's? It's up to you guys. What do you wanna do?
I don't know that, I don't, I don't, well, here's the deal. I don't know if they, they will reserve that back room for.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Good idea.
Let's go to, uh, Dwellem then again, please. And you'll notify them?
Okay. I mean, in the past, we used to use, we used to go to, uh, Jimmy's.
Right.
But they no longer let you reserve that back room.
Nope.
Right.
So that was, that was really out. The only, uh, Jack and Jim's is kinda the only place.
We'll go back there if you could notify them and they'll let us get that back.
Yeah, it usually works.
Yeah.
You know, you, you're not guaranteed the level of, you know, kinda quietness you are, but it, it works. So the ten, ten AM on the thirteenth of March.
Yep.
Make a note here, um.
We're not gonna have soil and water this year.
Okay, um, a couple more. So it's about this time of year that the board holds a closed session to, uh, do performance evaluations on departments. That would be myself. This year it'd be Roxanne, uh, Bob Cornelius. And I, it may want to include your county engineer in that as well. Um, so I wanted to offer you, you could certainly do it as part of a regular board meeting.
Yes.
Or have it as a separate standalone special meeting. Uh, I mean, would you like to go towards a regular board meeting then?
Or else do it right after the board meeting.
So, uh, next board meeting is the twenty-first. That might be a little early. Let me propose then the first meeting in March. March seventh.
I'm gone that week?
You're gonna be gone. March twenty-first then. March twenty-first.
Do we do them all or split them? I'm like, you said we got four?
Yeah, so you know.
I've done them all in the past.
It means tacking on an extra, you know, another ninety minutes to your board meeting.
Get them done with.
Another ninety minutes or so.
So the twenty-first?
March twenty-first then, we'll have that as the last thing on your agenda then for the day and that's done as a closed session. So, okay. I just wanted to mention, uh, is that in the past, we had preceded the evaluations by doing these surveys. So we sent out like the Survey Monkey thing to all employees. Um, I'm gonna ask you though to set that aside for this year. Here's why. Uh, we've been having conversations with the company that AMC has used that, that does employee retention work. And part of their project for us will be employee surveys. So I didn't wanna like send out one for evaluations and then a month later send out another big one for this retention effort. So I hope we can forego the surveys this time around. And, uh, and not bombard employees with two surveys back to back. So, thank you. Oh, and lastly again, uh, I, we, we should schedule Committee of the Whole for some conversations about the county engineer arrangement and, you know, possibly sharing an engineer and so on and so forth. So, uh, I, again, I'll just look for you to, I'll toss out maybe a.
The seventh?
A date.
Pardon?
Seventh?
No, he's gone.
I'm gone. When is GLT here? Twenty-eighth, huh? Could we?
Discuss that with our goals?
No.
No, no.
Well, you know, again, you're not gonna talk about goals until March thirteenth.
Twenty-eighth, yeah.
Could we go earlier though?
Yeah.
We can do it early. We can do it before. Is our GLT at nine o'clock?
GLT's nine o'clock.
I know. Could we do it earlier or not?
Not to do justice to it.
Yeah.
Could we do it right after? How long are they gonna be here?
Well, GLT will be a solid two hours.
Yeah.
So eleven o'clock?
What appears to be the consensus?
We're still hashing it. We're looking af-.
Still hashing it out, okay.
We're talking about after the GLT one.
Oh, on the twenty-eighth of February?
I just, they're gonna be a solid two hours.
Yeah, it's a lot for one meeting, yeah.
Cause we gotta, yeah.
I think we should discuss it sooner rather than later though.
Yeah.
And the next week you're gone. What's the, what's the thirteenth and fourteenth look like for you guys?
Next week? I'm out of town.
Again, if it's, again, next week I will be.
You're out, yeah.
Oot all next week.
Did you say oot?
Oot.
Uh, is it twenty?
What about?
Does February twenty-fourth work for anyone?
No, I'm out of town.
What about the twenty?
That, the twentieth through the twenty-fourth, I'm not available. I've got meetings every day, everywhere. And it'll be in the cities. We're at AMC.
Commissioner Heinand, did I just hear you say the twenty-fourth will not work?
No.
Will you miss our twenty-first board meeting?
You're talking February, right?
That's, yeah.
Yeah.
The AMC and then you got some meeting.
I got Shack down in the cities.
On the twenty-fourth, right?
Yeah, so what do we have also on the?
The twenty-first, we have a board meeting.
A ledge conference is twenty-second, twenty-third.
Yep, and I'll still be in the cities the twenty-fourth because I've got a meeting.
Okay. I'm asking you for a different reason. It's labor stuff, yeah. So, that's what I need to know on that one, so.
That's why that.
Can we tack it on to the twenty-first?
AMC ledge is twenty-second, twenty-third. Of course, board meeting on the twenty-first. And just as a reminder, of course, we have the Years of Service Recognition at seven AM on the twenty-first. Uh, beginning out at the sheriff, over at the sheriff's office.
Are we gonna have, uh, Mark, do you know if we'll have a ditch authority on the twenty-first? We would.
We do.
We, oh, we have that public hearing.
Which three, public hearing?
Oh, I have to be in the cities at two-thirty.
Well, we'll be done by then.
On Tuesday?
Hmm.
Um.
We'll just have to move.
What do you think about a, huh?
So.
Twenty-seventh afternoon or PM?
Yeah. I, yeah, I.
Seventh of.
Monday the twenty-seventh.
Quad meeting?
Quad meeting at.
Which I'm gonna talk to you about that, but could we do something early afternoon?
Well, we have a.
You know, maybe, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, the, the water, um, solid waste.
Maybe we just go back to your original idea of, of, of adding it to the twenty-eighth. How about that?
That's what I.
And, uh, you know, what I can do is I can inform Evan that, you know, we have other matters to discuss and can we keep it really tight, you know, keep it focused?
Well, and I'm wondering if you don't ask him if we maybe, what would you think of an eight o'clock with Evan and then move into?
Then move into that.
Eight to ten and then a ten to twelve?
I would rather do it early and get done before.
That work for you, Commissioner Pop? Maybe check with Evan and see if he could do an eight o'clock.
Oh, he can begin earlier.
Eight to ten and then a cow from ten to noon with highway?
Perhaps the other way around?
Yeah, I don't care. I don't care.
Okay. So just, either way, either way, we move our start time to eight AM on the twenty-eighth.
That work for everybody? Eight AM?
How long do you think the highway's gonna take? I don't think it's gonna take two hours.
Okay.
Oh, but at least an hour.
If Evan can go first, then he'll go first at eight. Otherwise, we'll talk highway issues at eight.
I don't, I don't think it matters. However you can organize it.
Yeah.
Whoever first doesn't matter.
Okay, gotcha. So we'll move the Cal on the twenty-eighth to the eight AM start time.
Yep.
And either highway first or GLT first, depending upon what they can do.
Sounds good.
That works.
You should put it first. I'm supposed to be off all week, but I can.
What did he say?
Travel back for vacation. I'm assuming you want to be there.
I don't think he wants to be first.
Does he have to be there?
I don't think so. I don't think it'd be necessary that you'd have to be here, Mark. We're just gonna discuss which direction we're gonna go.
You don't want the hidden or feedback of, uh?
Yeah, you know, I, I don't, I mean, I don't necessarily, Mark, you had to be there. No, no. Yeah, you know, I, I don't, I mean, I don't know necessarily, Mark, you had to be there. No, no. All right, we're set. That, Mr. Chair, that concludes their announcement to the committees of the whole. If you could be inclined to do a motion to approve those.
Motion to approve the new committees of the whole.
Second. Okay, motion and second for the committee of the whole listings as presented. Any other discussion? Are you not all those in favor?
I.
I.
Opposed, carried. They're set. All right, anything else, members? Monty?
We're good, thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned at ten forty-eight.